I'm gonna go ahead and call the order. This meeting in the March 18th, 2021, City of Nashville Planning Board. Linda, could we get a roll call, please?
Mayor Donches? Mike Peterson?
Here.
And are you alone?
Yes, home alone.
Thank you. Scott Leclair?
Here and alone.
Adam Varley?
Here and alone.
Maggie Harper?
Here and alone.
Alderman David Tensa? Alderwoman Jan Schmidt? Dan Hudson?
Here and alone.
Ed Weber?
Here with grandchildren in the next room or up above, so if you hear them, they're the ones you hear.
Bob Ballinger?
Here and alone.
Larry Hirsch?
Here and alone.
All right, we have a call.
I'm gonna go ahead and read the introductory statement. Again, my name is Scott Leclair. I'm the Chair of the City of Nashville Planning Board. And again, this is the 18th of March, 2021. Planning Board meeting. As Chair of the Board, I find that due to the state emergency declared by Governor Sununu as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic, and in accordance with the Governor's Emergency Order Number 12 pursuant to Executive Order 2020-04, this public body authorized to meet electronically. Please note, there's no physical location to observe and listen contained verbally to this meeting, which was authorized to meet electronically pursuant to the Governor's Emergency Order. However, in accordance with the Emergency Order, I am confirming that we are, number one, providing public access to the meeting by telephone with additional access possibilities by video or other electronic means. We are video conferencing utilizing Zoom and public access to the meeting is provided via Zoom. A link to the meeting was contained in the meeting agenda available on the city's website. The meeting is also going to be streamed through the city's website at www.nashvillenh.gov/318/ctv on Nashua's Community Link. And the public can also view on Comcast Channel 16. Two, I'm providing public notice and necessary information for accessing the meeting. Three, if anyone has a problem accessing the meeting, please call 603-589-3115, and they'll help you connect. Lastly, in the event that the public is unable to access the meeting via the methods mentioned, the meeting will be adjourned and rescheduled. I mean, control the meeting and to the extent practical and advisable, the Board will follow the procedures as identified in its bylaws. First, the applicant will present their case, followed by questions by the Board. We'll allow for a rebuttal period as best as possible for persons wishing to speak in favor, opposition, or have questions as a plans. The Board will then deliberate and determine an outcome. Applicants, their representatives, and other individuals required to appear before the Board are appearing remotely, and they are not required to be physically present. Applicants, their representatives, and other individuals required to appear before the Board may have contacted the Planning Department to arrange alternative means of real-time participation if unable to use Zoom. Please note that all votes taken during the meeting tonight will be done by a roll call vote, and that Board meetings will be held electronically until it's been deemed safe to conduct more typical meetings at City Hall. The Board, the Planning Department, and the city want to thank everybody for their understanding and patience during this time. Okay, so. We do not have minutes with us to look at today. Communications?
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the Board. You should have received one communication today. I sent out an email this morning with updated engineering comments regarding 5 Berkshire Street, and that is it. Thank you.
Okay. What was the date on the email? Just sort of...
March 18th.
March 18th. So it's today. Okay, thanks. Reported Chairman Committee and Liaison. Anybody have anything to report? Ed?
Yes, I wasn't able to attend the NRPC yesterday. I had pre-stuff that I couldn't. But that was it.
Okay. Next up, just as we get into the agenda here, just for everybody's... I've mentioned this already once, but we're gonna hear Case 821-0025 first. Next, I'm gonna hear 821-0032. And then there's the four cases from Flatley. We're gonna hear all those at one shot for the Flatley Group. You know, as we move into those. So that's gonna be the order of the agenda. So first up, old business conditional special use permits, there are none. Old business subdivision plans, there are none. Old business site plans, there are none. New business conditional special use permits, there are none. New business subdivision plans, Case Number 821-0025. Forseer Contracting and Building Services, Inc., care of John Forseer, owner. This is an application and acceptance of proposed proposal to subdivide 12,211 square feet of a single lot into two lots. This property is located at 5 Berkshire Street. First up, go ahead, Mr. Weber.
I have to recruise myself. I have not... I have family members that are adjacent.
Okay, thanks, Ed. So for the Board, has anybody had a chance to take a look at this application? Want to make a motion as to whether it's ready for us to take jurisdiction?
Chair, I'll make that motion.
All right, so we have a motion by Mr. Varley to take jurisdiction of 821-0025. Do we have a second on that?
Second.
Second by Mr. Hirsch. Any further discussion? Can we get a roll vote on that, please?
Mike Peterson?
Yes.
Scott Leclair?
Yes.
Adam Varley?
Yes.
Maggie Harper?
Yes.
Dan Hudson?
Yes.
Bob Ballinger?
Yes.
Larry Hirsch?
Yes.
And that motion passed as 7-0.
Okay, great. So do we have somebody representing the applicant that wants to speak on behalf? I guess, is that you, Steve, and you need the screen shared?
Evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board.
Thanks.
For the record, my name is Steve Auger. I'm a project manager with Hainer Swanson, and our office is located at 3 Congress Street here in Nashua. I am here tonight representing Forseer Contracting and Building Services. Joining me in the audience is Ms. Jessica Forseer. We have come seeking approval for a one into two lot subdivision of the land at 5 Berkshire Street. Quickly, some lot information. It is Lot 29 on map 61B. The lot is 0.280 acres in size. It is in the RA Urban Resident Zone. It is abutted on all four sides by residential uses. And back on October 13th, we went before the zoning board of adjustment where we received four variances, two per lot. Two of the variances were for a lot width on each lot, where 75 is required, and 60 feet of width is provided. And the other two were each for a lot size on each lot, where 7,500 square feet is required. And the two new lots will have 6,000 square feet and 6,211 square feet. Utilities, both lots will be serviced by municipal sewer, water by Panachuk, gas, and underground electric and telephone communications. Some site characteristics, the existing conditions of the site right now. As you can see, there's a very large storage building on the site right now. There's one driveway access to the building right here. There's a little concrete pad that accesses the building over here. The building does encroach over onto the abutting lot at 7 Berkshire and is actually connected to the existing garage there. I believe Mr. Forseer has had discussions with the neighbors about when the storage building is removed, he would structurally secure the garage as part of the building. To be disconnected would be kind of moving my cursor along here right here over our lot line. But he certainly would not leave that garage in any type of non-sturdy or secure standards.
Steve, just remember, we can't see your cursor. It's my cursor, so if you need me to point something out, just let me know.
Oh, okay. Oh, thank you, Matt. I was...
No problem. Yeah.
And for the record, I do apologize. For some reason, I'm unable to enact a screen share. So Mr. Sullivan was kind enough to do that for me. Stormwater, actually, Matt, if you want to go to Sheet 3, that would be great. The grading plan with the proposed houses. Stormwater, this falls under Section 190-215D of the National Land Use Code as a redevelopment project, as we're proposing to remove the existing storage building and other impervious surfaces. With that removal, taking down the building and the concrete pad and the existing driveway and constructing the proposed houses and driveways, we have shown we will actually be decreasing the amount of impervious surfaces by 162 square feet. We're showing a proposed stormwater management area in the back of the site that encompasses both lots. And we are adding four yard drains throughout the lots. There's two of them in back in the large stormwater area. There's one on the front left, Lot 29, right there. And then it's a smaller one on the right, Lot 30. That's where the fourth one is. We've submitted our stormwater design to the Engineering Department, and we believe we comply with the redevelopment section regarding the stormwater. I know Ms. McGee had mentioned in Engineering Tech Review comments email. I did not receive that email. Was that where our revisions accepted? By... I know that was one of the stipulations of approval, but apparently they have been accepted by the Engineering Department. With regarding lot addresses, the two abutting lots on both sides of us, one of them is 3 Berkshire Street, the other is 7 Berkshire Street, and our existing address is 5 Berkshire. So there is no address left in the past for an anticipated subdivision. So the Fire Marshal has informed us they don't have the authority to assign an address. So we will have to go before the Board of Aldermen to resolve that. They have the legal authority to determine what a new address will be. Obviously, one of the houses will have five reused. Whether the extra address is 5B or 5 and 1/2 or something of that nature, the Board of Aldermen has to determine that. We have initiated that process with the National Planning Department. We submitted our application and accompanying plans, and I'm just waiting to hear back from Marshal Wilkins as to what initial Board of Aldermen meeting we will be on. So that process is underway. We are requesting two waivers tonight, Mr. Chairman. The first one is Section 190-212D2 and 190-212D1. This is in regards to building sidewalks along our property frontage. The requirements...
Steve, I'm sorry, just to interrupt for a second. Can I ask someone, I think you just mute? There's a lot of background noise right now.
I think it's a caller on the ends in 737524. Can you mute that?
Sorry, Steve.
Nope, no worries. So the Land Use Code requires the construction of sidewalks along our property frontage unless we meet the requirements to request a contribution instead of a waiver. Those requirements are no existing sidewalks within 250 feet of our lot on either side of our side of the street, and that the lots could not be subdivided again in the future without help from the zoning board. We meet both of those requirements. So the Forseers are offering a contribution of $4,200 in lieu of constructing sidewalks. That number has been submitted to the Planning Department, and it was calculated using the somewhat new requirement for determining sidewalk contributions. The second waiver we're requesting is 190-282B9. In this waiver regard, showing on the plan specific existing conditions and topography within 1,000 feet of the site. We have submitted, along with our application, a National GIS map with the aerial map and utilities and topography and whatnot, which gives you an idea. But we're officially requesting that waiver as well. In summary, we feel that both waiver requests are reasonable, and furthermore, we feel that the above requests meet the spirit and intent of the National Land Use Code, and that a strict enforcement of the above sections would pose a financial hardship to our clients. In closing, we believe the site's being developed in a responsible manner and in accordance with the National Land Use Code. The recommended conditions of approval are acceptable to us, and we respectfully request your approval, and I'll be glad to answer any questions that anyone has at this time.
Thanks, Steve. So I just have one question. The comments from the city that we got today had a question about whether there's any easement requirements for the shed belonging to Lot 34 that protrudes into Lot 29-1.
I don't believe that there are. I know that was... We initially got that question. And our answer to that was when we did the boundary research, we couldn't find any existing easement. We noted the encroachment on the plan. And certainly, that's something that the Forseers could discuss with the abutting landowner.
The lot size of the lot to the left of the two new proposed lots. You have that? It's a little off the plane. I was just...
You mean proposed new lots?
27. No, like, I was just wondering what the lot size for Lot 27 is compared to the proposed new 29 and 30. It looks to be about the same or larger, but it'd be the lot to the...
Oh, the one that the garage is? Yeah.
Yeah.
Honestly, I'm not sure. I mean, we don't have... We didn't have that lot completely surveyed, so I don't know the exact square footage of that lot.
Well, yeah, I mean, based on the GIS plan, it looks like it's 60... It looks like it's 6,000 from the GIS plan, then 60 by 100. So is that accurate, Matt, correctly from the GIS?
From the GIS, it is 60 by 100 square lot.
Okay, so it's roughly the same size as the two being proposed.
Yeah, the two lots we're proposing, they all roughly fit into the neighborhood fairly well. You know, I mean, some lots are a little bigger, you know, some lots are about the same size.
Okay. Thanks, that's all I had. Anybody from the Board, Mr. Varley?
Yeah, just, thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a quick follow-up on the easement question. So there is a note on the plan that refers to a restriction that's recorded, and it says, "so much as they may still be in effect." Do you know what that restriction is, and does it relate to that?
Those... Yeah, you mean the easements, rights, and restrictions?
Correct.
Those were... Those... It actually doesn't relate to that shed. In our survey discusses with me, they were... They're kind of oddball restrictions from like 80, 90 years ago or so that you tend to find in deeds that really had no bearing on this. And based on what they were, they're kind of irrelevant to modern-day development, so we didn't list them out specifically.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions of the applicant? Mr. Ballinger?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I understand it's been touched upon, and I'm... So I'm not trying to beat a dead horse, so to speak. I'm really trying to understand... I guess, first of all, it's labeled as a garage and not a shed. I just want to make sure we're talking about the same structure. And I'm trying to understand how a physical structure, whether it would be a shed or a garage, on what appears to be protruding into another parcel, how we can take action on that and approve that. I'm looking at Google Street View, and it appears to be a garage that would accommodate one, if not two, vehicles. And I'm just trying to understand the legal element here. There's obviously... It would appear, based on the plans, there's obviously an intrusion into, you know, an abutting property. And I just don't exactly understand what the legal ramifications are here. And I don't know if the applicant would be able to speak to that more directly.
Wait, if you're... Mr. Ballinger, if you're talking about the encroaching shed, I think you've got the wrong lot. If you look at the plan and look at the lot on the right, 3 Berkshire Street?
Um, no. Mr. Auger, I'm looking, I guess, due west of your site. It says "existing garage to remain," and I just... That's map 61B, Lot 27?
Correct. Okay, I thought you were asking about the shed. So I thought you were asking about the shed. The shed's on...
Well, I was a little confused because I see the shed overhang to your immediate east, but I also see an existing garage, which appears to be somewhat connected to the existing storage building immediately to the west. And I wanted to make sure we're talking about the same thing or we're talking about a different thing. Is the garage that immediately abuts your property to the west, is that part of this structure or part of your development?
The garage is connected to the storage building.
Who owns the garage?
The abutting neighbors own the garage. That's their garage.
Okay, so that it connects to the existing storage building, but it's not technically the applicant's property?
Correct. I not stated that the garage is the applicant's property.
I didn't say that you did state that. I'm trying to understand and read the plan. And when you have two connecting buildings like that, I'm just trying to understand what the ramifications were for a structure that's physically adjoined.
Yeah, it sounds like, Bob, they're just... They're gonna take down the storage building. Correct me if I'm wrong, Steve, but they're gonna leave the garage, so...
Yes.
The issue will essentially be cleared out.
Matt, if you could go to screen share to Sheet 2. You see the... See, there you go. See the dash line? See how the... Right there. That's... That is the area kind of where the garage and the storage building meet based on the different sizes of the building. What we're proposing is to take down the storage building up to that point because the storage building goes over onto the abutters' land. And then Mr. Forseer would structurally ensure that the remain... That that wall of the remaining garage is structurally sound once he disconnects the storage building from the garage.
Okay, thank you. That helps. I was not sure what the remnants or the structural integrity of that garage would be post-demolition.
Yeah, yeah, no. We certainly would not leave it in any type of, you know, ill-repair or whatnot. Once the storage building is taken down, Mr. Forseer would ensure that the garage is sturdy.
And Steve, just to clarify, I mean, I think what you had said is... And I think the abutters might be on the line here. But you had said the Forseers have had a discussion with the abutters, and you understand they've reached an agreement or an understanding as to how that would work, meaning the raising of the existing building and then the, you know, the structural, you know, changes to the existing garage.
Well, that was my understanding. I mean, the abutters can certainly speak when Mr. Leclair opens it up.
Yeah, it sounds like an open item. I'll bring it up when we get to public comment. Other questions of the applicant by the Board? Not related to the garage, I guess? It doesn't look like any. Maybe this is a good time. Does anybody in the audience listening in, which is the speaking opposition concerned or have a question of the plan? If it's the abutter, it might be helpful actually to talk about the garage. Go ahead and unmute, state your name and address for the record, and then go ahead and comment. You're still muted right now. Yeah, so... You're still muted. Yeah.
The bottom left, there's the microphone button.
Yeah. You're still muted.
Okay, can you hear us?
Yeah. Yeah, yeah.
Okay, hi, how are you? I hope everybody's fine this evening. Wet evening as we have it. Yes, this is Rick Knapp and Sue Knapp, which is the abutters of the property that's being discussed. And...
Can you just take your address real quick for us?
7 Berkshire Street, Nashua, New Hampshire.
Thanks. Yeah.
May I continue?
Yeah, go ahead. Yeah.
Okay, very good, sir. At the last meeting, the Zoom meeting that we had, everything was, I guess, discussed and so forth. And what happened is that you approved the variance that they needed in order to put two buildings on the property.
That was zoning, but not us. Yeah, yeah, okay.
Well, the Planning Board did.
Zoning. This is the Planning Board. Yeah. But it was zoning that approved that. Yeah.
Oh, the zoning, I'm sorry. I'm new at this.
That's okay, yeah.
I'm new at this, and I'm very nervous right now.
Oh, that's okay.
So please excuse any... But anyways, at the end of the meeting, the Forseer Contracting, there was a lady that was representing them, and at the very last part of the meeting, she said that she was going to contact us. And this was back in October, and we received nothing since today. I mean, nothing. Absolutely no correlation back and forth or anything. But we did have contact with Mr. Steve Dennison, which is the owner of the property, on three occasions. And on those occasions, what happened is that he promised us that no way, shape, or form that this transition of the property that's abutting, the warehouse that's abutting to my garage, would cost us no way, no money whatsoever, and that it would be done in a proper manner and would be done according to the neighborhood situation. The only questions that I have is that... Let's see. Yeah, that will blend in with the neighborhood, which is his definition of a done deal. I think there should be a meeting between the builder and Steve Dennison, owner of that property, to iron some issues out, exactly what's going to happen to my property. He had claimed that what he was going to do was redo the roof in order to make it cosmetically pleasing to the neighborhood and finish the side of my building as well once the storage shed was taken off of it. My concerns are is that the two and a half feet that is existing on my property is... There's a foundation there that's approximately a foot and a half, two feet deep. I mean, wide, probably eight feet deep on my property. Is that going to be removed? I mean, or are they just gonna... I mean, or are they just gonna bury it on my property? I, I wasn't sure on that, because nothing really was explained at this time.
Okay, we can ask the applicant, yeah.
I'm sorry?
Well, uh, we can ask the applicant that after you're done, yeah.
And also, um, I'm not sure, I mean, how will we be assured that the city is going to make sure that the garage will be structurally safe and the repairs are completed, you know? I mean, I, I, we have no idea of that. And, uh, also, uh, I think what they're trying to do, I think is nice, and I think that it's gonna really blend in with the neighborhood and everything, it's just that I, I would like to have ourselves protected in a way that, uh, everybody knows this in the meetings, what my concerns were, that's all.
Okay, thanks, yeah, okay. Well, we'll give the applicant a chance to respond to that, and, uh, anything else you wanted to add, or?
We would just like to have something in writing, and.
Some type of assurance or something.
I mean, it is our property.
And we are seventy years old, we born, we've owned these property for forty-five years, and we've allowed Ross Brown, which is a former owner, in order to have that building on our property, because we just like, we like everybody on our property, and we like to get along with everybody, and it's just, everything is great, but now that things are changing hands and so forth, we just like to be assured that we're getting what we're due us. That's all.
Okay, thanks. Okay, thanks.
And Mr. Dennison assured us of this, that it would not cost us anything, or, until said situation was completed. And I believe him, he's a stand-up guy from what I've known him, and, uh, I just, uh, from this point on, I don't know what to do.
Okay, thanks, yeah, we'll, um, we'll let the applicant respond, and, and then, um, I'm sure the board will have questions as well, so. Okay, anybody else, um, in the audience wishing to speak in opposition or concern? Hang on, I gotta get through the public stuff.
I'm wanting to make pub, uh, comment as part of the public.
Oh, okay, sorry. Go ahead, yeah.
Uh, why, reason I'm doing.
Go ahead and say your name and address for record, just for.
Ed Weber, at four Cabernet Court, Nashua, New Hampshire. Um, the reason I'm making the comment is my, uh, sister-in-law, she's not feeling good tonight. Uh, and she has the abutting property at three Berkshire Lane, and what I understood at the zoning, she was, she attended the zoning on Zoom, and, um, the, the shed is on that property, because there, she didn't know there was a stake, she didn't see a stake or anything like that in the ground, so she just estimated what it was, and so I'm sure that they'll be able to, uh, work with her on this, and the fence that's there too, so. Uh, that's the only reason I'm talking is because of the fence, uh, uh, the fence and the shed. Uh, and it would be great if a, on the other, Sue, I know Sue and her husband there, that a stipulation to, uh, I just recommend that a stipulation, the building inspector would inspect that garage for its, um, structurally, and, you know, before, um, a, um, a building permit or something like that would be issued, just so that, you know, they're gonna be taking it down, but that would be part of a building and be, um, inspected by the building department. I don't know, before building inspection, you know, before permit is issued, but something like that, a stipulation, that would work for all parties there. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Anybody else wishing to speak in opposition or concern or have a question of the plan? Okay, hearing none. Um, Steve, I'll give you a chance to respond to the public questions. If you want.
Um, well, with, with, I know, um, uh, I know the Naps mentioned Steve Dennison, he, he is one of the co-owners, uh, along with Forseer, uh, uh, contracting. Uh, with, with regards to, uh, the existing foundation uh, that is on, that the storage building's on, um, I, I'm, I'm not a structural engineer, I'm, I'm not sure if that would have to be left in place or, or be buried. Um, I, I would leave that to Mr. Forseer to determine that, that's, that's his business, that's, that's what he does. You know, with regards to any, any type of agreement or, or what was said, um, I, I'd actually, uh, uh, let, uh, Ms. Jessica Forseer, uh, comment on that, um, she, she works for the company, uh, and can probably, uh, speak to, uh, what they're willing to, to do with the Naps more intelligently than I can.
Jessica on here?
I am.
Okay, yeah. Say your name and address for a record for us.
Okay, uh, Jessica Forseer, three Chaucer Road, Nashua. Um, I was at the, I actually spoke at the variance, um, hearing. Um, I did, so that you know, uh, Mr. and Mrs. Knapp, I did come by your house two times. Um, you were not there the two times that I stopped by, so unfortunately, I'm sorry, I'm, I wish I had more time to stop by again, um, but I also did know that Steve Dennison, uh, who owns it as well with us, Forseer Contracting, that he had spoke to you several times. So I knew that at least he, he did make contact with you, um, so I, I kind of left it at that. Um, I know, yes, we did speak at the variance meeting, um, in regards to, we, we said yes, definitely, we would leave that, that side of your garage, uh, match the siding as best we possibly could to your current siding that's on the garage, and it would be left structurally sound. Um, and somebody had just mentioned about the, a building inspector, I would assume that when we go for our demo permit, um, they're not just gonna let us take down part of a building without knowing if what's left is gonna be found. So I'm, I can't say I'm a hundred percent sure that they, that they look at that, but definitely if we need to have somebody, a building inspector come and, and take a look at that, um, we will do that. Uh, but again, I still think, just to get our demo permit, I'm pretty sure that they're gonna wanna make sure that what we're demoing, if we're leaving something behind, that it's going to be okay. Um, in regards to the roofing and the siding, both, uh, what we had said was, we would match as best we possibly can. Uh, I know siding sometimes, if it's older and it's faded, um, it's white, so it should be fairly easy to match. It might not be exact, but I, I also don't really think that it would as well be fair for us to have to re-side the, the whole garage, or, you know, re-roof the entire roof, um. So that's kind of our take on that. Now, the foundation that, that's, uh, from the storage, uh, unit of the warehouse, whatever we're calling it, uh, that's in the ground, as long as the, the, the bill, the building inspector, or whoever gives our demo permit, is fine with us removing that foundation that goes to that building that's being removed, uh, we would remove it, and then we would leave the, the, you know, the, you know, grass back intact. We would put it back the way that it should look, uh, for your yard. We wouldn't just leave it, you know, you know, mud or anything like that. So if that's something that needs to be put in writing and for today, that's fine with us, um. We have no intention of leaving you upset in the end, we just, you know, it's kind of an odd situation that the building's attached, uh, and we want this to come out the best way possible. We want us to walk away with you happy, so. Um, I hope, I think that answers everything, uh, if not, you know.
Yeah, let me just see if I had any more questions. I don't have any. Um, I guess I give, I don't think there's anybody else on the line, so I'd give, um, the abutters, um, did you have any other further questions, or?
Uh, yes, as far as she stopping by the house twice and no one was home, I don't know why she didn't leave a note with the phone number so that we could contact her.
Not only that, but Mr. Dennison and Forseer Contracting are supposed to be really good with each other, so they should have had contact one way or another, or Mr. Dennison should have gotten a hold of us in the time being, if she was trying to get a hold of us, we would have called her straight back. And as far as the, uh, building is concerned, uh, I think that Forseer Contracting and Mr. Dennison should get together and have Mr. Dennison tell Forseer Contracting what he had told us about the garage, on how he felt that this should be taken care of. Because, uh, by the way, that Mrs. Forseer is replying that something got lost somewhere within the two of them. Now, I'm willing, and I would really love to have a meeting within these individuals together and try to iron out these issues. I mean, I would think that that would probably be the best way in order to resolve the whole situation. Everybody walks away happy, and that's all we wanted to do in the end anyways, isn't that right?
Yeah, thanks, all right, yep, we got it.
I said it, I just wanted to quickly ask the, the, the abutters, the Naps a question. So, uh, based on, on, understanding that, that I think you're seeking maybe a bit further clarification, and, and you had asked for something in writing reflecting, um, you know, how the, the garage is gonna be treated, and I, I think Ms. Forseer said that they are, you know, they are amenable to doing that. I, I'm just wondering if, if conceptually what she described is consistent with what you understood was going to be done. She, she described, you know, what they intended to do, which was to, a- as she said, match the siding, match the roofing as best as possible, and then that they would remove the foundation, if they could do that consistent with, you know, the, the city requirements, and that they would replace that, you know, and, and re, you know, put new grass down. I, I mean, is that generally consistent with what your understanding of what was going to happen?
Uh, somewhat, because, uh, underlying things that have happened also within the ownership of, uh, five Berkshire Streets shed is that the, uh, father had, um, completely kept that up tight until the son owned it, and, uh, what happened is that, uh, they used to have exterminators come out in order to, uh, uh, do for ants, critters, and what have you, but since the son had it, they dropped it. And I know there's gonna be some structural damage as far as, uh, the siding between his siding and mine. Now, I've had people come out and do, uh, 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 extermination, everything on my garage, as well as my house, but I'm not, I, I'm not sure about the internal. And, I mean, are they going to repair that as well, if there's any damage on my garage as far as that's concerned? Make sure that's structurally safe, and as far as the roof is concerned, the siding is not a problem, because they're just shakes. I mean, it's not siding or anything. Uh, as far as the roof is concerned, though, i- it's boxed out, so it'll look like somebody went in with a chainsaw and just cut it off. I just want the roof to be cosmetically pleasing on the way that the rest of the roof is, that's all. Thank you.
Mr. Varley, anything else, or?
No, no, that's all for now.
Okay. Other questions of the applicant by the board? Other questions, uh, Mr. Varley?
Yeah, sorry, I, I, I just, I guess I wanted to follow up with, with Ms. Forseer, so.
Yeah.
So I, you've obviously heard from the Naps and, and sort of what their, I, I think, continued concerns are, and it sounds like you're, you're amenable to, to coming to some, um, you know, written agreement with them as to, you know, what would be done to ensure that both that the, that the garage would be structurally sound, and, and that, you know, that you would, you know, match the, the siding and the roofing as, as best as possible, um, you know, consistent with it, you know, being a standalone building. A- and speaking for myself, and not necessarily the other board members, um, you know, if we were to consider approving this plan with the condition that you had to reach, you know, an agreement with the, with the Naps, you know, as to the, the contents of that, would, would you, would that be acceptable to you?
You're on mute, sorry.
All right. Um, uh, yes, I mean, yeah, I, I, I know what they're talking about, it being lobbed off looking, um, and, and I think we could agree to, and I know what they mean by cosmetically pleasing. You don't want it to look like the roof was here and then stopped, and the other side goes all the way down, and that's fine with us. But we can definitely do that, and, and if it needs to be written in there that we've gotta come to an agreement with, with, you know, and sit with them, and, and and actually have something in writing, then yes, that's fine. That works for us, yes.
So will you get in contact with us?
Yes, and, and I apologize because.
Hang on, we, we really, we really can't have kind of back.
I'm sorry.
But, but I mean, yeah, that's okay. Go ahead, and it's Forseer, finish what you were saying, yeah?
Yeah, um, we jointly own this, it's Forseer Contracting and Steve Dennison, so I, again, I felt no need after that to reach out, but, but it, in, he has told us what he thought, and he was on board with what I had said. So, I understand that there are some other small details, it sounds like, like that, the lobbing off, and no, we, we, we don't, we obviously don't wanna leave it look like hokey, I don't know how else to say it. We're, that's not the kind of work that we do anyways, and being that we're the ones that are gonna disconnect the building from their garage, we wouldn't leave it looking like that. So, um, I, I am confident that we'll be able to come to an agreement that will be pleasing to them, so. If that needs to be put in there wording-wise, that's fine with us.
Okay. Mr. Varley, anything else, or?
That, that's all for me, thank you.
Okay. All right, uh, I would give the board members, uh, one more opportunity to, uh, ask any questions of the applicant or staff. Prayer to closing the hearing.
Mr. Chair?
Yep, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, I guess my, my, my general question would, would be, I, I don't know how enforceable a condition is. Uh, th- this is a pretty unique situation, and, and I, 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 I believe the applicant is well-intentioned, but I, I also don't wanna be in a position where, where, where leaving the affected party, the Naps, potentially in a lurch, and, 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 and a promise is great, a- a- and I don't mean to diminish that there's a good faith effort there. I, I just don't know what, what instrument would actually affect this. Um, heaven forbid, there, there, there were something to go wrong in the demo, like I, 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 I don't know what ultimately the city does. I'm, 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 I'm not trying to insinuate that, that there's, there's legal action pending, I'm, I'm just trying to think about if it, if it were me. What guarantee do you have that the work would not actually affect your, your property? And I don't know if, if note number twenty-seven on a site plan does that. That's, that's my concern, and I don't know if the board or staff has any examples of something comparable, uh, and I guess what I'm getting at, do we actually need to know that whatever instrument it is has been accepted by both parties? Uh, and I'll, I'll, I'll leave the question there. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, maybe staff could comment on that, they're probably the most appropriate. Matt, do you have a thought on that?
I, I have.
Linda's at change to go, so go ahead.
I've been texting Matt, so. They're gonna have to get demo permits in order to, uh, take down the building, and I'm assuming they're also, now, not in the building department, I'm not a building inspector, but I would assume they'd also have to get a, a demo permit to take down part of the, um, the garage on the abutters property as well. And then they're also gonna have to apply for building permits. So, I mean, they will have to be, um, submit plans of how they're gonna be, um, put back together, and inspected by the building inspector. So I don't know if that's something that, um, you know, at that point, the neighbors could come to some kind of agreement on, but it is kind of hard for then staff to mediate between, between the two parties if there is no agreement, and, and I think at that point, they'd have to come back to the board. Um, but they will have to get demo permits, they will have to submit pictures, and actually, planning does sign off on the, on the demo permit.
Right.
I, I don't know if that, if that helps a little bit.
Does some, Mr. Hirsch, did you have some?
Uh, my, my concern, what happens if, when the, you're, the demolition is going on and the garage collapses? What happens if there's a, a known problem or situation arises? Do they rebuild the garage? Or just leave a pile of rubble?
Man, I don't think that'd be, you can talk with staff on that, but I don't think that'd be any different than if, you know, someone's dump truck ran into somebody's house as they were going by, you know, it's the same. You know, that's a, that's a legal situation. Yeah. Mr. Varley?
Yeah, I, I, Mr. Chair, I think to your point, it seems to me there's, there's two different issues here. I mean, one, you know, I think we can, we can create a condition that requires, you know, the applicant and the Butters to come to some agreement, whatever that agreement is. And I'm thinking, you know, we, we can do that sort of at an advanced stage of, you know, the, the process so that we know that there's been something in writing agreed to by the parties before, you know, demolition has started, for example. Um, but then I think, you know, to the extent something goes wrong, as Mr. Leclerc said, I mean, that could happen. In, granted, this is a unusual situation where you've got this, this building on, you're both, both lots, but you, anytime there's construction on a lot, I mean, you, you could have something in theory that could go wrong, that could impact an abutting property. And if that happens, or if, you know, the applicant, you know, doesn't fulfill the terms of the agreement, you know, it's, it's then the same, I think, as if you had any contract or if you had any damage to an abutting property because of, you know, construction that an applicant is doing.
Mr. Hudson, did you want to add something to?
Yeah, I was just curious, do we have any indication of which building was, part of this building was built first? I mean, is it possible that the, the building to be raised was built first and the garage was added second, in which case I'd hate to hold up the removal of this building, um, you know, or, or, or hold them hostage if, if the garage was added second and, and, you know, and turns out that that's the thing. I mean, clearly it crosses over the property line, so that's unfortunate. But if everybody at the time thought that was the property line, you had two buildings, I don't, I, 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 I'm sympathetic to, uh, not wanting the garage to be damaged, but also I'm just, I'm curious about the history of this, you know, which came first.
Um, I think the applicant or Steve had been in the search of anything. Did, did you find anything there on that?
Uh, that I, I don't know the answer to that. Um, I mean, I'm, I'm wondering if, if, if the Naps would have more history on that, given how long they've lived there.
Uh, they know, yeah, I'm, you're happy to get a response. Yeah.
Hello?
Yep.
Yeah, no, uh, when we bought the house, that's the way it was. So I really don't know who's, if it was our garage first and then the building was attached or vice versa. I honestly couldn't tell you because when we bought the house, that's the way it was.
And honest, and excuse me, Mr. Leclerc, and on a side note, which I'd never, uh, mentioned to, uh, you or anybody else that, uh, another concern of ours was is.
Oh, sorry, we lost your audio. I did anyway.
Yeah, we can't hear you.
Okay. Yeah. Oh, we lost your audio, sorry. You look unmuted, but we have lost the audio, so.
No.
Oh, you're back. Yeah.
You got me now?
Yeah.
Okay, uh, what I was trying to say real quickly is that, uh, nothing was ever mentioned. And I forgot to mention this, that there's about fifteen thousand dollars worth of stuff in my garage. And I just want to make sure that all that is being protected and, uh, make sure that nothing gets broken or anything. That's all. I mean, I, I gotta have assurance and some, something like that. I mean, if I have to move stuff out, uh, that's going against Mr. Dennison's word about the fact that, that this isn't going to cost me anything because don't forget now, we live here and it's, they want to do it. We don't want to do it. If, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, okay, thanks. Uh, any other questions by the board? Any questions by, for staff? I don't know, I, I'm Linda or Scott, I, I don't know if I, this is kind of different. I'm not sure I remember any, I think we've had commercial properties do this kind of stuff on several occasions. Cause they cross over, you know, like a strip mall onto multiple lots or something like that, but residential. We haven't had many where they left them in place, so, um, to my own knowledge, but.
Yeah, I don't have any.
Okay, well, anybody else in, so anybody you have from the board, Mr. Sullivan?
I was just briefly going to comment. I, I'm concerned that putting a condition on this, you know, related to whether or not the demolition work is done in a way that either doesn't damage personal property or is done to a, done in a manner that's aesthetically pleasing to the abutting owner, goes beyond the jurisdiction of the application that's in front of the board. And I, I hate to say that, but technically what's being done here is removing a non-conforming structure. It's bringing the properties closer into compliance with the zoning ordinance and you're completing a subdivision. So I'm not certain that anything beyond that should be included as part of a condition of this approval should the board proceed. And, and I just, you know, second what Linda said, that anything related to structural integrity, uh, the building process itself will be cover, covered as part of the building permitting process and the demolition permitting process. And going beyond that does concern me a bit because it puts, you know, puts the board and city staff in a position of enforcing what is and is not an agreement between two parties, which is ultimately a civil matter, you know, by nature, I think.
Yeah, I mean, my thought about this and I, the only analogous situation that I can come up with is, uh, is essentially like a lot line adjustment where we don't have an agreement between the two properties to actually move the line. And in those cases, we don't take the case yet. So, you know, and I don't know if that's a reasonable analogy or not, but that's kind of what's coming out of my head. So, but, Mr. Varley, did you want to say something for?
Yeah, I mean, uh, you know, Mr. Sullivan, I, I, I definitely appreciate the concern. I mean, I think and, and this is, I, as far as, as far as my experience on the board, this is, I think, unprecedented. I don't think I've ever seen a situation quite like this. Um, I, I mean, you know, my thought was that, you know, that if, if we were to add as a condition, because I agree with, with Mr. Leclerc, that, you know, the, ideally this would have been, you know, worked out in advance. And we would have had, you know, the Butters and the applicant saying, yes, we've, we've got this agreement in place already. But given that we'd taken jurisdiction and, and given that we've now heard the case, my thought was that we could, you know, again, make that as a condition, understanding that I, I, I don't want to put, you know, the staff in the position of having to try to enforce an agreement. But, you know, my thought was more along the lines of, of, of the type of condition that, you know, would be included fairly routinely, like, you know, if, if an applicant had a, you know, was required to submit, you know, condo documents in advance of, you know, a certain stage of, of the, the project or how to submit stormwater management documents that we could say, you know, we need some, you know, written document signed by the parties that would indicate that they have agreement. Um, so, so that's, that's sort of what I had in mind here, but I, I, I agree. I, I don't, I don't want to do anything that would put this, put staff in a position of having to, you know, enforce that agreement or to, you know, to determine, you know, whether something was, you know, suf- sufficiently, you know, aesthetically appropriate for, you know, whatever had been done.
Sorry, yeah, my, uh, my, I, it almost seems like there's some shared, shared issue here because they, you know, they, they have buildings that interface. Um, the fact of the matter, I think, is that in order to remove this building, they're going to need permission to go on, uh, Naps property. Um, and so, you know, the, 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 the Naps are in a position to decide what, what they're willing to allow to happen as part of that, you know? I'm not sure we need to be involved other than to ensure that they have permission to go on the property. And I don't think the building, building, uh, department's going to issue a building permit or a demo permit unless they have permission into the property. Um, and if they can't come to a re- reasonable agreement amongst themselves, um, then it becomes a civil matter as, uh, as, uh, Mr. Sullivan said. So, I'm not su- I, I kind of agree, uh, Mr. Sullivan. I'm not sure that we need to dig too deep into, uh, in, into the details of the agreement.
Okay. Other questions or comments by the board before I close the hearing? Okay. Uh, I'm gonna go ahead and close the hearing then move into the meeting. So, um, so yeah, definitely for the board folks, I think, you know, it's a odd situation. I mean, yeah, some of us, like Adam, myself, been on the board for well over a decade here. I haven't seen this. Um, it seems to me like the applicant and the butter, both are interested in getting this done. There doesn't, there, there isn't, there, there isn't one person or one side here saying, I don't want this done. So I, you know, I don't, I'm not a huge fan of the board standing in the way of something that they ultimately want done. Um, but I do think it makes sense to, um, to have some sort of condition in a, yeah, and I, I think I'm, I'm somewhat in line with Mr. Varley. I, I think we need, I mean, if we can get us at least a signed agreement between the two of them that gets submitted, you know, I mean, it could be before I sign the plan, frankly. Um, you know, so we can push it right to the front, you know? Um, and that gives, that, that gives building department, you know, even seeing that happens before, um, before they need to get into it, you know, so. So I guess I might be in favor of something like what you said, Adam, but making sure it gets done before I actually even sign the plan. So, that's my two cents. Anybody else have a comment? Mr. Ballinger?
Yes, thank, thank you, Mr. Chair, and I, and I appreciate all the comments from, uh, other board members and, and staff on the matter. I, I guess quite honestly, um, I'm just a little disappointed. We, we spent a great deal of time here in the applicant discuss about a, a tiny bit of shed overhang on the east, but this appears to be the elephant in the room here. And, and I, I know there's certain restrictions on, on what we can and cannot enforce, but I, I guess I'm somewhat surprised that it got through zoning and it, and it got this far in the planning board process without that really being addressed. Um, I, I am disappointed that there is no existing agreement and we're basically put in a position now where, where we're kind of, it seems like we're, we're kind of boxed into a corner. We're basically going to have to accept a handshake agreement that this is all going to work out in the end, when I think there could have been a lot more due diligence ahead of time. Uh, that's, that's my thought on the matter. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Comments by the board, Mr. Hirsch?
Could we, could we table, table this basically and deal with it next meeting, uh, when they come back with a signed agreement?
Which certainly is within our, I mean, we have three options always. One is to approve, one is to disapprove, and one is to table. When we table, it's generally for a reason, right? So we would need a specific reason. Um, but, you know, welcome any comments by the board on whether they think they need that agreement prior to making a decision, or are you okay with that agreement prior to me signing a plan? Yeah, so it's one or the other. Anybody else have a comment on that? Mr. Varley?
Yeah, I mean, I, I guess, again, I, I mean, I do agree, it, it would be preferable if there had been, you know, some agreement in place beforehand. Um, so that, you know, the Butters would have come on and said, yes, you know, we've, we've had these discussions, there's, you know, we're, we're on the same page, you know, we're, we're, you know, we're ready to move forward. Um, with that said, and in part because of, you know, I think what, you know, Matt and Dan both alluded to, which is, you know, I, I think we're unlikely to get into the, the details of, you know, whatever that agreement might be. Um, you know, in terms of, and I think we heard what, what the basic considerations are, right? That, you know, the, you guys want to make sure that the, the remaining garage is structurally sound, obviously. And they want to make sure that, you know, the siding and the roofing are, are matched in a way so that it, you know, that it, you know, looks aesthetically pleasing, that it's, you know, it's not, it's not left, um, in a form that doesn't, you know, doesn't look like a completed garage. So, you know, with, with that said, and, you know, notwithstanding the point about, I, I really think this should have been resolved in advance. I, I think, you know, there's probably not a whole lot of benefit to tabling this if we're simply going to table to say, okay, next meeting, now we've got that agreement. Okay, now, you know, now we're going to move forward. You know, but we're not going to look at the details of the agreement. So I, I just, I, I mean, again, you know, and I'm happy to sort of take the, whatever direction, you know, the, the board in general is, 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 you know, want to go on this, but, but that would be my, you know, inclination would be, you know, let's move forward on this, but, but have that sort of condition in there.
Yeah, I think too that there's, there's, uh, from listening to the applicant and even the Butters, there's definitely agreement that the end result being presented is, is sort of a betterment on both sides, you know? And certainly improves both properties. So, so I, I, you know, my two senses, they're, they're not, you know, I agree with you, Mr. Varley, that, you know, we're just gonna delay it to say yes after they sign something. I feel confident, you know, I could approve it and just put that stipulation on and, you know, that has to just get done before I sign it so that, so that, um, you know, keeps the process moving. I'm, I'm pretty comfortable with that. Anybody else have any issues or want to talk on the board? Okay. Here none. Does somebody want to make a motion?
Well, since I made the suggestion for this, the stipulation, I guess I should, I should probably make the motion.
Yeah.
So I would make a motion to approve new business, uh, project A twenty-one dash zero zero two five subdivision plan. Uh, Forceer Contracting Building Services owner, uh, proposed two lot subdivision at five Berkshire Road. Uh, finding that, uh, the plan does meet the requirements outlined in subdivision NRO section one ninety dash one thirty-eight G. And, uh, that will be with seven stipulations total. The first stipulation is a waiver request from section one ninety dash two eighty-two B nine. Um, and that will read is granted, will not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulation. The second stipulation is also a waiver request from section one ninety dash two twelve A one. Um, and that will also read is granted, will not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulation. And that will indicate that the applicant has agreed to make a contribution in the amount of four thousand two hundred dollars in lieu of sidewalk construction. Uh, stipulation is number three, numbers three through six, um, I'm sorry. Uh, stipulation number three is written in the staff report. I believe, um, we can delete stipulation number four since those comments have now been resolved, so that will be deleted.
Correct.
Uh, so then five and six is written in the staff report, but renumbered accordingly. And a new stipulation, which I guess will actually be six rather than seven, um, and that will read, prior to the chair signing the plan, the applicant shall submit, shall, shall submit a written agreement between the applicant and the butter at seven Berkshire Road with respect to.
Street.
Street, okay, it says road on the applicant, on the.
Street.
Okay, thanks.
Thanks. So, sorry, prior to the chair signing the plan, the applicant shall submit a written agreement between the applicant and the butter at seven Berkshire Street um, with respect to, um, the demolition of the, uh, existing uh, storage building and the impact on the Butters', uh, garage and, and the maintenance of that uh, garage with structural integrity.
And, and then I just had one quick question for staff, whether, um, did the email from today from Joe Mandola, did that still have some comments that needed to be addressed?
No, it did not.
Okay, great. Okay, so I'm good. All right. So we have that, uh, motion by Mr. Varley, um, with those, um, I guess, I guess it's six stipulations, really? Is that correct?
Yeah, sorry, I said seven.
Six stipulations as stated. Um, do we have a second on that?
Second, Peterson.
Second, my Mr. Peterson, any further discussion? Okay, can we get a roll vote on that, please?
Mike Peterson?
Yes.
Scott Leclerc?
Yes.
Adam Varley?
Yes.
Maggie Harper?
No.
Dan Hudson?
Yes.
And, uh, Bob Ballinger?
No.
And Larry Hirsch?
No.
That's one, two, three. That motion passes.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Hold on. Next up, I'm gonna hear just the, uh, extension um, for new business site plan case number eight twenty-one dash zero zero three two. If somebody has, anybody from the board had a chance to take a look at that application and want to make a motion as to whether it's ready for us to take jurisdiction?
Weber, move to, um, take jurisdiction.
All right, so we have a motion by Mr. Weber to take jurisdiction. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Hirsch. Any further discussion? Can we get a roll vote on that, please?
Mike Peterson?
Yes.
Scott Leclerc?
Yes.
Adam Varley?
Yes.
Maggie Harper?
Yes.
Dan Hudson?
Yes.
Ed Weber?
Yes.
Bob Ballinger? Larry Hirsch?
Yes.
And that motion passes eight to zero.
Okay. Um, so do we have someone here from the applicant, uh, that wants to just present this, uh, extension?
Is that me, Linda?
That would be Michelle Richard.
Richard, are you there?
He's here, but he might be muted.
Yeah, he's muted.
This is Richard Maynard, can you hear me now?
I can.
All right. This is an extension request because we're caught up in the moratorium as we got to the new pavement on West Hollis Street that occurred down back in two, twenty sixteen. Uh, this will be the second extension. The matter before you is, is the uh, construction of four new houses on a lot with one existing house, uh, for a five residence project with a private road, uh, on town, on city water and sewer. Back in, uh, December of sixteen, the zoning board gave us a variance for multiple structures on the plan. Uh, a year ago, the, uh, this, this planning board, two years ago, excuse me, this planning board approved the plan with several stipulations. A year ago, one extension was granted to this point, and now we're asking for another extension. The moratorium, uh, with regard to the pavement, the street should end in September of this year. So the project will go forward this year. We have a potential buyer, developer to build it, so this should be the last time we see you guys, or you see us. Oh, we, in the end, we're asking for a one-year extension. Same stipulations of approval as previously, no changes to the site, no changes to anything. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Folks from the board, any questions of the applicant on the extension? Okay. Seeing none, I will, uh, is anybody in the audience wishing, who's listening in? Wants to speak in opposition or concerned I have a question on the plan, please go ahead and unmute, state your name and address for record. Okay, hearing none, I'll give the board one last opportunity to ask any questions of the applicant or staff during the hearing. Okay, not hearing any, um, you're gonna go ahead and close the hearing. Um, so we have in front of us just an extension based on the pavement moratorium, seems pretty reasonable, sounds like the moratorium is going to come off this year. As indicated by Mr. Maynard, so, uh, no problems on my side. Anybody have any comments or want to make any comments? Can, can I get a motion?
Weber.
Wait, Mr. Weber.
Yeah, uh, new business project eight twenty-one dash zero zero three two site plan at, uh, seven uh, eleven West Hollis Street. To approve a one-year extension, um, site plan, um, it meets NRO one ninety, one forty-six D, uh, with all prior conditions of approval are incorporated herein and made part of this plan unless otherwise determined by us.
Okay, so we have that motion to approve with all prior conditions, uh, and stipulations as indicated by Mr. Weber. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Peterson, any further discussion? Okay, can we get a roll vote on that, please?
Mike Peterson?
Yes.
Scott Leclerc?
Yes.
Adam Varley?
Yes.
Maggie Harper?
Yes.
Dan Hudson?
Yes.
Ed Weber?
Yes.
Bob Ballinger?
Yes.
Larry Hirsch?
Yes.
That motion passes eight to zero.
Thank you, folks.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you all. And Linda, great, great job. Thank you for all your help. I have to give her a shout out. She's my new BFF. Bye, everybody.
Okay, so next up, um, we have several applications that, they're all kind of related. So what we're gonna do is, I'm just gonna read them in. For Chad and, and for the Flatley folks, uh, I'm gonna read them in and then we'll just, we'll go through the jurisdictional, um, you know, discussions first for all four of them. Um, and then I'll, you know, go, come to the applicant, um, you know, and then you can present them as a package. Um, so that, I think that'll be the most expedient and clear way of doing it. So first up, new business subdivision plan, this is subdivision plan eight twenty-one zero zero two two. This is John J. Flatley Company, application and acceptance of proposed lot line relocation and subdivision. This property is located at two hundred Innovative Way and ten Tower Boulevard. So I'm gonna start with the board, has anybody had a chance to take a look at this subdivision plan? And want to make a motion as it's ready to take jurisdiction or not?
I'll make that motion.
All right, so a motion to take jurisdiction eight twenty-one zero zero two two by Mr. Varley. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Weber, any further discussion? Can we get a motion on, or, uh, excuse me, a roll vote on that?
Mike Peterson?
Yes.
Scott Leclerc?
Yes.
Adam Varley?
Yes.
Maggie Harper?
Yes.
Dan Hudson?
Yes.
Ed Weber?
Yes.
Bob Ballinger?
Yes.
Larry Hirsch?
I think Larry's on mute. Larry, you're on mute, you there? I think we have hope areas.
Yes.
Okay.
That motion passes eight to zero.
Okay, so, um, next up to be heard with the last one, this is new business site plan eight twenty-one zero zero five two. John J. Flatley Company, application acceptance of proposed site plan amendment to NR twenty-one sixty-five to show a lot line relocation. This property is at one hundred through three twenty-six Innovative Way. Can I have, uh, a motion by the board as to whether this site plan is ready for us to take jurisdiction?
I'll make a motion that we accept jurisdiction of new business eight twenty-one dash zero zero five two site plan.
Okay, so we have a motion by Mr. Peterson to take jurisdiction of this site plan as well. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Riley, any further discussion? Let's get a roll vote on that one.
Mike Peterson?
Yes.
Scott Leclerc?
Yes.
Adam Varley?
Yes.
Maggie Harper?
Yes.
Dan Hudson?
Yes.
Ed Weber?
Yes.
Bob Ballinger? Larry Hirsch?
Yes.
That motion passes eight to zero.
Okay, moving on to the next one that we'll hear together is new business site plan eight twenty-one zero zero five three. Again, John J. Flatley Company owner, application and acceptance of proposed site plan amendment to NR twenty-one, excuse me, NR one two five six to show a lot line relocation. This property is at ten Tower Boulevard. Do we have a motion as to whether to take jurisdiction of this site plan?
I move we take jurisdiction of eight twenty-one dash zero zero five three, Weber.
So we have a motion to take jurisdiction by Mr. Weber. Do we have a second? Second by Mr. Riley, any further discussion? Okay, let's roll vote that one as well.
Mike Peterson?
Yes.
Scott Leclerc?
Yes.
Adam Varley?
Yes.
Maggie Harper?
Yes.
Dan Hudson?
Yes.
Ed Weber?
Yes.
Bob Ballinger?
Yes.
Larry Hirsch?
Yes.
That motion passes eight to zero.
Okay, and then one more, uh, new business site plan eight twenty-one dash zero zero two three, again, John J. Flatley Company. Owner, application acceptance of proposed twenty thousand five hundred and forty-six square foot climate controlled self-storage facility. Property being located at two hundred Innovative Way and ten Tower Boulevard. I have a motion as to whether this site plan package is ready to take jurisdiction.
Weber? I, uh, uh, take acceptance of eight twenty-one zero zero two three site plan.
So we have a motion to take jurisdiction of this A zero zero two three site plan. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Peterson, any further discussion? Okay, let's get one more roll vote, please.
Mike Peterson?
Yes.
Scott Leclerc?
Yes.
Adam Varley?
Yes.
Maggie Harper?
Yes.
Dan Hudson?
Yes.
Ed Weber?
Yes.
Bob Ballinger?
Yes.
Larry Hirsch?
Yes.
That motion passes eight to zero.
Okay, thanks, everybody, for your patience. We've got every, so we've got all four of them in, uh, Chad and Mr. Walker. So, um, you can go ahead and go right through the, the package, so.
Perfect. Um, good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. For the record, my name is Chad Brannon, civil engineer with Fieldstone Land Consultants. Our office is located at two oh six Elm Street in Milford, New Hampshire. And with me tonight is Kevin Walker with the John Flatley Company. As, um, you guys had just reviewed, we are before you this evening, uh, seeking approvals on four applications. All of these applications are related to the development of a climate control self-storage facility, uh, within Gateway Hills. And all of these applications were approved, um, back in two thousand and nineteen. And unfortunately, due to the, the circumstances over the last year, um, these approvals did lapse, so we're back before you, uh, seeking reapprovals. Um, none of the regulations have changed, and there's been no planned changes. Um, but we will go through, uh, the presentation. Um, I, I know back in two thousand nineteen, staff recommended that we present the site plan amendments first, then the lot line adjustment, and then the, um, site plan approval for the climate control self-storage facility, and that might be the easiest way to navigate through and have everybody, um, follow, because there's a fair amount of moving pieces of this project. So if you don't mind, Mr. Chairman, I'll, I'll share my screen.
Yep, that's fine, yeah.
So I will start with the site plan amendment application for tax map parcel A dash seven ninety-eight. Uh, this parcel is part of the larger Gateway Hills development formerly known as Nashua Technology Park. The, uh, John J. Flatley company, company, uh, has acquired a number of parcels over the years, which now encompasses over four hundred acres of contiguous land. Um, and Gateway Hills is, uh, it does exist as a mixed-use development with professional office space, research and development buildings, retail space, a hotel, um, townhouse structures now under construction, uh, flex space under construction, um, and multifamily residential buildings. Gateway Hills is serviced by one public road, uh, known as Tara Boulevard, and three private roads consisting of Innovative Way, Research Drive, and Digital Drive. Um, this site plan amendment, uh, proposes to reduce the size of the subject parcel A dash seven ninety-eight by one point one zero four acres. The new area will partially accommodate the proposed new uh, climate-controlled self-storage facility. Um, and this application is for the movement of a lot line with a subdivision and site plan to follow. So the, um, red highlighted area on the plan that I have before you, this area here is the portion of, uh, parcel A dash seven ninety-eight that we're proposing, um, to modify and, um, I'm basically, um, create, to create the, a portion of the climate control, uh, self-storage facility parcel. There there are no other, uh, changes proposed with this subject property, other than this lot line adjustment. As part of this application, we are requesting one waiver. Uh, that waiver request is from section one ninety-two seven nine EE, which requires that physical features onsite and within one thousand feet of the project be depicted on the plan. We also are in receipt of, uh, the, the staff memo for this evening's meeting, and we have no objections to the staff's recommendations and findings. Um, so I, if the board doesn't mind, I'll, I'll move on to the second, uh, site plan amendment, unless you have any questions at this time.
I think you can go on to the second one, yeah? We'll capture them after.
So the second site plan amendment consists of making modifications to tax map parcel A dash seven one three, which is located at ten Tara Boulevard and is comprised of ten point one one six acres. The subject site is currently occupied by an office building with associated site improvements, as depicted on the plan that we have before you this evening. This site plan amendment application proposes to reduce the size of the subject parcel by one point one two acres. This new area will partially accommodate the proposed new, uh, climate-controlled self-storage facility. Excuse me. There are no other changes proposed to the subject property, and to our knowledge, the parcel and property complies with all of their uh, local ordinances after this modification. As part of this, uh, application, we are requesting a one waiver, um, and that is the same waiver, um, from section one ninety-two seventy-nine EE, which requires that physical features onsite and within a thousand feet of the property, uh, be depicted on the plan. Again, we are in receipt of the, uh, staff memo for this evening's meeting, and we have no objections to the staff recommendations and findings.
Okay.
Moving on to the third application. This application, um, now that the site plan amendments have been reviewed over tax map parcels A seven ninety-eight and A seven one three, we can proceed, uh, with the subdivision application. Uh, the primary purpose of the subdivision is to create a new lot uh, combining the pieces taken from tax map parcels A seven ninety-eight and A seven one three. Um, again, those areas consisted of one point one zero four acres and one point one two acres. So we are proposing the creation of tax map parcel A dash ten um, eighteen, which will consist of two point two two four acres of land and will have access off of Innovative Way. It'll actually have a physical address of seventy-five Innovative Way. This new lot is being created to accommodate the proposed, uh, new climate-controlled self-storage facility. And again, we believe this parcel, uh, does comply with all, um, city ordinances. We are in receipt of the staff memo for this application this evening, and we also have no objections to the staff recommendations and findings, uh, within this memo. With this application, we are requesting two waivers. Um, the first waiver is from section one ninety-two eighty-two A regarding drafting standards and plans not being smaller than fifty feet to one inch, as our overall, uh, site plan had to be at two hundred scale in order to fit the entire property on one sheet. We are also requesting waiver from section one ninety-two eighty-two B nine, which, um, again, is, is this, is the subdivision's version of, um, the section that requires physical features within a thousand feet of the, uh, subdivision be depicted on the plan. I guess just to show you one more plan, so just to kind of pull it together, um, this is the, this yellow area is the part of the parcel from A dash seven ninety-eight, and then this blue area is the parcel from, um, A dash, uh, seven one three. Together, they make up, um, this new proposed lot, which is A dash one zero one eight.
Okay.
Everybody's good with that, I'll move on to the, uh, site plan application.
Yep.
So the next is the proposed site plan application for the climate-controlled, uh, self-storage facility. This proposal consists of developing tax map parcel A one zero one eight, assuming that gets approved This proposal consists of developing tax map parcel A one zero one eight, assuming that gets approved, into a, uh, seventy-three thousand four hundred and forty-two square foot climate-control, uh, self-storage facility. This facility will be a three-story building along the front. Um, in the front would be this, um, east side here, and then a four-story building along the back, which would be the west side, as shown on the plan. Site improvements will include, uh, reconfiguring the existing parking area to provide for better traffic flow to the facility, as well as providing for forty-seven, uh, parking spaces onsite, which does include two ADA-compliant handicap spaces. We have reviewed this layout with the fire department and have made modifications to address their concerns and comments. And we've also worked with the city's engineering department, um, and to address their review and comments related to the site design and stormwater management design for this project. The stormwater management for this site will be mitigated through the construction of a stormwater basin, basin at the south side of the property, uh, which is shown on the plan in this location here. The redevelopment of the parking on the site results in a reduction of impervious cover, uh, which drains to the existing closed drainage system on, onsite. Other site improvements for this project will include site lighting, landscaping, and utility connections, as the project will be, uh, serviced by municipal sewer, Penn and Chuck water, and natural gas. There are wetland, uh, buffer impacts associated with this project, mainly due to utility, um, extensions and, um, stormwater mitigation. We did receive a favorable review from the Conservation Commission, uh, back on March twenty-seventh of two thousand and nineteen, and we also obtained a special exception through the zoning board of adjustments back in, um, March of two thousand and nineteen as well. Uh, this plan does comply with all the conditions, uh, that were imposed by both boards. Again, we are in receipt of the staff memo for this application as well, and we have no objections to any of the staff's recommendations and findings. Uh, with this particular application, uh, we are requesting three waivers. One waiver is again from section one ninety-two seventy-nine EE, which requires that physical features onsite and within a thousand feet of the subdivision be depicted on, uh, the plan. We are also requesting a waiver from section one ninety-one ninety-eight regarding off-street parking requirements. Uh, the parking matrix for this project requires seventy-three spaces, um, and the plan provides for forty-three parking spaces. Uh, we are providing a parking agreement between parcels A, uh, one zero one eight and A seven one-three, which would allow for the regulations to be technically met, because there's a, there's adequate parking if you consider both projects. Uh, but at the request of, uh, staff, we are requesting a waiver from this section, since the parking is not technically met on this, uh, property. I will say, then, we touch on it in our waiver request, that we think seventy-three parking spaces for a climate-control self-storage facility would be, um, quite excessive, as traffic to these facilities is typically very, uh, minor. And our final, uh, waiver request is from section one ninety-one seventy-two C, which requires, uh, varied roof lines. Um, we did submit elevation views of the building, uh, with this application. Um, all of these waivers were approved back in two thousand and nineteen. We have not made any changes to the building design or any changes to any of the site designs, um, but, um, unfortunately, we, we have to march back through the process due to the, to the, uh, approvals, um, lapsing. So with that said, Mr. Chairman, I'd certainly, and members of the board, I'd certainly be happy to try to answer any questions that the board may have at this time. Thank you.
Okay, thanks a lot. Um, so I'll put it out to the board, uh, any questions of the applicant?
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead, Mr. Ballinger.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Just, just a quick question, because I, I think some of the history of, of this site maybe predates my time on the board. I just wanted to, to understand, the approvals that you, you were, were previously met, that they've actually lapsed, as opposed to the last application we saw, where you're requesting a one-year extension, so this, this was formally approved, but the approvals lapsed, so therefore, that's why you're coming back tonight, so it's technically a new application? Is that correct?
Correct.
Correct? Okay. Thank, thank you. Thank you for the, uh, administrative clarification. I appreciate that. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yep. Other questions by the board? Okay, um, I don't believe there are any other people on, other than the board and the applicant. When, is there anybody, I guess I'll put it out there. Is anybody in audience? Wish to speak in opposition or concern, have a question of the plan? Not hearing any. Um, okay, before I close the hearing, I just want to, this is probably a technical thing for staff, but I think we probably need to decide on O-O fifty-two and O-Fifty-three first, right? Because the other applications don't work unless those go first. Is that correct? And then we go to the subdivision, and then we go to O-O twenty-three? Does that make sense? From our staff?
Yeah, I, I think that's appropriate. I don't know, Scott, you were going to weigh in on that, but I think that's appropriate.
Yeah. Yeah, that, that, that should be fine. I know we usually do the subdivision first, normally, uh, and then move into the site plan, so there might have been a little confusion there, but that will be fine.
Yeah, yeah, I was thinking the two amendments essentially make the, make the space, if you will, for the subdivision, right? So, okay, all right, so, um, anybody else want to, have we asked any other questions while we're in the hearing? Okay, I'm not seeing any. I'm gonna go ahead and close the hearing on these four items. Uh, move to the meeting, so, um, pretty straightforward, uh, I think we, you know, some of us have seen this before. Still the same arrangement, um, you know, pretty good development, that's been doing well, it seems like, and, uh, seemed reasonable that self-storage would be a support to the, um, to the residential development there. So, I'm, I'm still, still a fan of, of what's going on here. Um, anybody else have any comments or? Have any discussion? If not, I think the best thing to do here is, is, uh, I'd like to start with, um, new business eight twenty-one dash zero zero five-two site plan amendment. So anybody want to make a motion as to whether to approve or, or not approve this particular site plan amendment? Mr. Weber?
Yep. New business eight twenty-one zero zero five-two site plan amendment, located at, uh, one hundred dash three twenty-six Innovation Way, uh, owner, John J. Flatley Company, uh, mending site plan in our twenty-one sixty-five, uh, to move the lot line, decreasing the size of the existing lot. Uh, seeing the plan meets NRO one ninety, one forty-six D, uh, with, uh, one waiver request. Uh, waiver two seventy-nine EE, which requires, uh, one to show all existing features in sight on adjacent partial is granted. Finding the waiver will not be contrary in spirit in the regulation with two other stipulations as written.
Okay, so we have that motion to approve, um, with the stipulations as indicated by Mr. Weber. Do we have a second on that?
Second?
Second by Mr. Peterson. Any further discussion? Can we get a roll vote on that one, please?
Mike Peterson?
Yes.
Scott Leclaire?
Yes.
Adam Barley?
Yes.
Maggie Harper?
Yes.
Ian Hudson?
Yes.
Ed Weber?
Yes.
Uh, Ballinger?
Yes.
Larry Hirsch?
Yes.
That motion passes eight to zero.
Okay, um, regarding, uh, case eight twenty-one dash zero zero five-three, the other site plan amendment, is anybody want to make a motion regarding that? Mr. Weber? Go ahead. Oh, yeah, was that Mike? I didn't hear which one. Go ahead, Mike. Sorry, I heard you first.
I'll make a motion that, that we approve new business case number eight twenty-one zero zero five-three, site plan amendment. Owner, John J. Flatley Company, proposed to amend site plan NR one-two-five-six to remove a lot line, to move a lot line, decreasing the size of the existing lot. So we would also like to approve site plan NRO, it meets site plan NRO one ninety, one forty-six.
Oh, Mike, you hit mute button.
With, uh, with three stipulations, stipulation number one, uh, as written, uh, what is granted and will not be contrary to the spirit and, and intent of the regulation, and, um, stipulations two and three as written in the staff report.
Okay, so we have that motion to approve with this three stipulations as indicated by Mr. Peterson. Do we have a second on it? Second. Second by Mr. Hirsch. Any further discussion? Can we get a roll vote on that one, please?
Mike Peterson?
Yes.
Scott Leclaire?
Yes.
Adam Barley?
Yes.
Maggie Harper?
Yes.
Ian Hudson?
Yes.
Ed Weber?
Yes.
Bob Ballinger?
Yes.
Larry Hirsch?
Yes.
That motion passes eight to zero.
Okay, thanks. Uh, next up, I'd like to take, um, eight twenty-one zero zero two-two, the subdivision. Does anybody want to make a motion on that? Mr. Weber?
Uh, new business eight twenty-one zero zero two-two subdivision, uh, applicant, John J. Flatley, uh, at one hundred, uh, through three twenty-six Innovation Way. That it meets NRO one ninety, one thirty-eight G, uh, with two waiver requests. First is one ninety-two eighty-two A, which sets minimum scale for subdivision plan is granted. Finding the waiver will not be contrary in spirit and ten of the regulation. Um, request for waiver one ninety-two eighty-two B nine, which requires existing condition plan is granted. Finding the waiver will not be contrary spirit and ten of the regulation. And three through nine as written.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Weber. We have that motion to approve with the nine stipulations as indicated by Mr. Weber. Do we have a second for that?
Second?
Second by Mr. Peterson. Any further discussion? Okay, let's get a roll vote on that, please.
Mike Peterson?
Yes.
Scott Leclaire?
Yes.
Adam Barley?
Yes.
Maggie Harper?
Yes.
Dan Hudson?
Yes.
Ed Weber?
Yes.
Bob Ballinger?
Yes.
Larry Hirsch?
Yes.
That motion passes eight to zero.
Okay, thanks. And then lastly, the, uh, new business eight twenty-one dash zero zero two-three site plan for self-storage. Uh, does anybody want to make a motion regarding that? Mr. Weber?
Yep. Just letting everybody else have a chance.
Keep going.
Okay, new business eight twenty-one dash zero zero two-three site plan. Uh, owner, John J. Flatley Company, uh, amendment to NR two and twenty-one sixty-five and NR twelve fifty-six to construct a self-storage building, uh, location at L Innovation Way and ten Tara Boulevard. Let's see. Uh, that it meets, uh, NRO section one ninety, one forty-six D. Uh, request for waiver NRO one ninety-two, two seventy-nine EE, which requires existing conditions to be shown is granted. Finding the waiver will not be contrary spirit and ten of the regulation. Uh, uh, request for waiver NRO one ninety dash one ninety-one, which requires minimum parking standard for the site is granted. Finding the waiver will not be contrary spirit and ten of the regulation. Your request for waiver NRO one ninety, one seventy-two C, which requires varied roof line is granted. Finding the waiver will not be contrary spirit and ten of the regulations of it. Uh, and four through fourteen as written.
Okay, so we have that motion by Mr. Weber to approve, uh, eight twenty-one dash zero zero two-three with the fourteen stipulations as indicated. Do we have a second?
Second?
Second by Mr. Peterson. Any further discussion? Okay, can we get a roll vote on that one?
Mike Peterson?
Yes.
Leclaire?
Yes.
Adam Barley?
Yes.
Maggie Harper?
Yes.
Ian Hudson?
Yes.
Ed Weber?
Yes.
Bob Ballinger?
Yes.
Larry Hirsch?
Yes.
That motion passes eight to zero.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, appreciate it.
All right.
Thank you for your time.
Yep. Okay, next up on the agenda, we just have the tentative agenda. Um, two pages worth. It's getting long.
Yes.
So has anybody a chance to take a look at the, um, this agenda, March eighth one, from the technical review meeting, and want to make a motion as to whether any of these, uh, proposals have any regional impact significance?
Mr. Chair?
You go ahead, Mr. Ballinger.
I'd like to make a motion, um, that there are no projects of regional impacts based on the tentative agenda of the technical review meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Ballinger. So we have a motion by Mr. Ballinger. There are no proposals of regional impact in the tentative agenda. Do we have a second? A second, second by Mr. Barley. Uh, any further discussion?
Mr. Chair?
Yep, go ahead.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. I, it looks like there's a few notes here. There might be some, some site walks coming up. I, I didn't know if you would have time to elaborate, or if those dates are fixed at this time. Um, I think, I think it doesn't affect the ultimate outcome of, of the original motion, but, um, I just wanted to get some clarification on that. Uh, specifically for the landing, it looks like there, there may be a site walk scheduled for, uh, the thirtieth of this month.
Yeah, I'll let, um, planning go ahead and answer that question, yeah.
Yep, good, great question. Thanks, Bob, for the question. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, the landing in Nashville will have a Conservation Commission site walk on, uh, I believe it's Tuesday, uh, March thirtieth at five fifteen PM to look at the potential wetlands impacts of that project. I would note, just for the record, that, um, in discussions with the chair, once the application comes to the planning board, I will recommend to the board that you hold an independent site walk to look at all components of the project. Uh, but you're certainly welcome to attend that confirmation, Conservation Commission site walk on March thirtieth at five fifteen PM, uh, if you'd like to. Uh, and then the board will, obviously, we're planning for the board to hear the initial presentation on, from that applicant on April eighth, uh, for the site plan review applications, the subdivision application, uh, and the like. Uh, but again, that March thirtieth date is just for the Conservation Commission review precedent to the special exception for wetlands impacts.
Uh, thank you, thank you, Mr. Sullivan. I appreciate the clarification, and, Mr. Chair, the only reason I brought it up is because I think in our last meeting, you had mentioned that we may have, uh, a site walk, um, at, for the planning board. I just wanted to make sure that, that was or was not the, the date of our walk, so thank, thank you very much. I appreciate that.
And, no, we haven't really set the date for our walk yet, right?
Uh, that's correct, Mr. Chair. Uh, the, oh, I didn't know Ms. Weber's question, but just to answer your question quickly, no, we haven't, um, what I expected is a process, and I will discuss this with the board, but after the here, the initial presentation, if you will, on April eighth from the applicant, what I expect is that the planning board would set a site walk at that time for sometime in the month of April. And then we have discussed a potential special meeting, uh, on April twenty-second to just focus on that project, uh, and to potentially accept jurisdiction. Uh, but again, that site walk would happen somewhere in there, and the applicant has been clearly, uh, communicated with that there will be no approval considered until May, uh, because of the various steps in the process, the need for the special exception through the zoning board. Uh, but again, it would be a, a mid-April site walk is what we would anticipate, and we'd work with the, the board to identify a proper date and time for that to happen.
Great, okay. Mr. Weber?
Yes, um, questions for Matt? Knowing the situation across the river at Hudson, if this impacts the Merrimack River, then site-wise or anything that's, when it's a thing like this, the whatever kind of building or something that's going to be going there, because it impacts the Merrimack, it may be a regional impact for Hudson. I know that talking with the NR Nashville Regional Planning Commission, they said if that logistics thing has, does impact the Merrimack water, that would be a regional impact. So I'm asking the question, because it can impact people's viewing, this may be a regional impact. I'll let you go.
Yeah, I would just respond quickly with two points. One being that the specific project does not impact the buffer, impact the buffer directly in the same way that the Hudson Logistics Center does. So that is a different component, but I would, you know, for full transparency based on our preliminary review, there is a stormwater impact potentially to the river as a result of the proposed development on the site. And so if the board feels that that stormwater impact alone, which will likely be additional discharge into the river, does trigger regional impact determination, we can certainly, you know, I'd be happy to discuss that and provide more information if you'd like to consider, you know, that vote at a later time. I will say, though, that the proposed development, sort of as is with the gas station, the Costco retail facility and the storage facility, in my opinion, is not a regional impact as proposed, despite the fact that it is a large parcel. But certainly, the larger project and development that's contemplated further down the road would potentially trigger that. But I'd be happy to provide further information if the board would like some to make, you know, supplemental determination on regional impact.
Thank you. If, I think if you just were to discuss this maybe with the Nashville Regional Planning Commission, I think they can really, you know, just stating with that. I would not make any amendment right now. I would just go and get information before we do anything else to make any other motion. I would just go forward with what we've got, with the motion on the table.
All right. Okay, I think we had a second, right? Mr. Hudson?
I had seconds.
Okay, Mr. Barley.
I don't know who seconded, but I would just, this list has been improved with the added information at the end. I would just further ask, maybe we can add case numbers to the cases that are in process? Just be easier to keep track.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
It's a good comment. Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, thanks. Any further discussion? Mr. Ballinger?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just one quick thing, and this doesn't necessarily have to apply to just the landing, but to Mr. Weber's content, or comment, rather. If there were maybe some clarification as to what constitutes regional impact, I've made a number of these recommendations, I think, on my time on the board. The RSA, as I read it, is pretty nebulous. And even if you declare regional impact, all it effectively does is give the abutting municipality technically a butter status, if you will, in the process, so they could introduce documents or whatnot. But it's not necessarily a function of the size of the development, the type of development. It's kind of whatever you wish it to be, if you will, and I'm not trying to ask you an open-ended question. But if, at some point in the future, there may be others where we need clarification on what exactly constitutes regional impact. And I'll leave it at that, Mr. Chair. I know there's been a lot of discussion on a relatively simple motion here, but I appreciate all the feedback that we've gotten so far, so thank you very much.
I think it's a good point. We probably have, I don't know, Scott or Linda, we probably have a training that we have to have sometime this spring, right? Usually it's spring, early summer. Maybe that's a good topic for that, you know?
Yeah, it's usually May, isn't it?
Yeah, right in May, we usually have a, like, training, tend to be on sidewalks for the last, like, couple of years. But this might be a good topic, yeah. I think maybe write that one down from Bob, and we can add that on to it. That's a good idea, Bob. That would be good. Okay, any other discussion? All right, let's get a roll vote on that.
Mike Peterson?
Yes.
Scott Leclaire?
Yes.
Adam Barley?
Yes.
Maggie Harper?
Yes.
Dan Hudson?
Yes.
Ed Weber?
Yes.
Bob Ballinger?
Yes.
Larry Hirsch?
Yes.
That motion passes eight to zero.
Great, thanks. Okay, discussion items. The only thing I had, Matt or somebody, can you remind me when the next public thing is for the master plan? Is it like second or something?
It is April sixth. The next master plan session will be April sixth.
Yep.
And to Scott and Adam and others who participated in the last one, we promised to have more time with the session to talk about things. We had a very rushed session back in early March. On April sixth, we'll talk about very specific corridor areas, the Amherst Street corridor, the DW corridor, Danny Webster College as a site-specific study, and also sort of the East Hollis and Bridge Street area where you've approved some multifamily projects recently and where the Heritage Rail Trail East is proposed to come out. So it'll really be an opportunity to do a deeper dive on some of those, you know, geographic areas where there's been a lot of talk of redevelopment or recently approved development. I'm excited for this one. I think it's going to be the real kind of meat and potatoes, the first sampling of that. So again, April sixth at six PM, if you do have a chance to jump on and join, that'd be great.
Yeah, and I think, do we, we don't have a, do we have a meeting between then and now? No, right?
You don't, because as I learned today, the board does not meet the first Thursday. I panicked today with Linda. You meet the eighth of the month in April, so there's no meeting before that.
Yeah, so maybe a reminder email around the fifth or something, you know? To remind us, that'd be excellent.
I can send one of those out, absolutely.
That would be good. Any other discussion items?
Weber?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. I talked with Linda earlier today, and I talked with Kenny Miller, I think it is, over at at the mayor's office. I'm gonna stop being a planning board member as of July. I'm planning on putting in my resignation. I've enjoyed this place immensely and everybody associated with it. It's been a great run. Been here for a while. And that's why I actually stopped being a secretary earlier because I knew I was going to plan to do this. My business is just going hog wild right now. I'm going to be moving out of my little shop here and into another building. So it's going crazy at this age.
All right, great. Well, we appreciate everything. I'm sure, maybe by that time, we'll be able to get together.
Good excuse to get.
Be a good excuse for a planning board, you know, who doesn't down the street.
I know.
Yep. Okay, great. Anybody else?
Yeah, one small point. If in the odd chance we have a walkthrough at the Sky Metacountry Club, should we bring our golf clubs that day?
We can just putt around.
Sounds fun. All right, anything else? If not, I take a motion to adjourn, anybody?
Some.
All right, we have a motion to adjourn by Mr. Weber. Can we get a vote on that, please?
Mike Peterson?
Yes.
Scott Leclaire?
Yes.
Adam Barley?
Yes.
Maggie Harper?
Yes.
Dan Hudson?
Yes.
Ed Weber?
Yes.
Bob Ballinger?
Yes.
Larry Hirsch?
Yes.
That passes eight to zero.
All right, we are adjourned at exactly nine o'clock.